Notice requirements provided for in the open public meetings Zach Tebbin satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Sun, and the Two Over Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and filing with the township clerk on January 5th, 2023. Miniman Clark.
Here.
Minewoman Kratz.
Here.
Miniman Sanabreno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you.
Heidi, real quick, just gonna ask everybody to stand just for a brief moment of silence. Yesterday, First Lady, former First Lady Rosalynn Carter died at 96 years old. Obviously, not too many people in this world know what it's like to be the spouse of a president, and obviously she did it with grace, so I think it's fitting to just stand and honor her life for just a moment.
Thank you.
Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation recognizing the Middletown High School's South Girls Cross Country Team for winning the 2023 NJSIAA Group Three State Championship. At this time, I'd like to invite the team and Coach Bill Clifton to please join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
You wanna go so we anchor each other since we have the Navy suits on?
No, I wanna be by the.
Alright. First of all, let's give it up for our state champion. So it's really impressive to be here once again for yet another state championship in this building. I feel like we are on such a hot streak in Middletown. I don't know what it is, ever since we moved in this building, I feel like I stand up here every meeting for another state championship, which, listen, keep them coming, I love it. But just, what was it, last weekend or two weekends ago now?
Yes, two weekends ago.
And I just wanna start off with the coach real quick, because we were at the, I get the text message from, where's Dave? There it is. I get it, it was state champs, they did. So I'm like, wow, this is right, let's do this thing, you know? And then I get the text, hey, the fire engines are meeting them at 114, Chief Morrissey and Chief Kelly back there, bringing them in, bringing them in for a victory. But the thing I wanna point out the most is the persistence of a team and the dedication of a team. Because from the stories that I heard from parents, the stories that I heard from the coach, was that there was a second there, there was a second there, that it might not, it didn't feel like the victory that it was gonna be. That it was a little bit, it might not have been the perfect overwhelming victory. But you know what? It doesn't matter whether you win the Super Bowl by a point or 20. It doesn't matter whether you win in four games in the World Series or seven. State champions are still state champions, and every one of you deserves a big round of applause. The question I asked the coach was, I said, well, is this your first one? And he said, no, it's my third, right?
Yes.
And he goes, this one's the sweetest. This one is the sweetest.
For sure.
And, you know, I'm gonna let the coach say a few words in a second. I don't think I told you that, but I'm.
I'm ready.
But the, what encompasses a team, what makes a team, is people who can rely on one another. That's the beauty of it. That's the beauty of working with good people, being on great teams, is that somebody can have a bad day and somebody else is there to pick them up, because that's the perfect definition of a team. So I wanna congratulate you, you're representing Middletown, representing Middletown South, and I hope that you have nothing but success and bring that championship right back to Middletown South again next year. Before we take pictures, Coach, let you say a couple of words about your team.
Basically, that we're very honored to be here, you know, and grateful to the town council and the people who are here tonight that came just to see us. Across country is a sport that does not get a lot of attention. You can be a state champion, it could just be slipped right underneath the rug. So for the towns, they have made such a big deal for the fire department to have come after we won that state championship, and to be here just recognized, it's very, very special to them, and it will last for the rest of their lives. And we're very proud to say that we are state champions in front of our own, you know, townspeople, and that we can say, here we are, we're the state champs, the Middletown did it.
Yeah, this is a well-deserved win. On behalf of the township committee, we're honored to present you with those certificates, and again, we wish nothing but success, but now the pressure's on. I want that championship again next year, alright? So congratulations, let's give it up for these. You want me on the SI, ready?
I'll go. Everyone ready?
They're never ready.
One, two, three. Congratulations. Go ahead, Karen.
Don't stop smiling and tell all the cameras, buddy. Alright, congratulations. Alright, let's give it up for the state champ.
Hey, Middletown South Cross Country, the deputy mayor, very smartly, just said, I think I should go out to the parking lot and race them. Now, I will put up big money to see that happen, and I know that Mercantante is with me on that one, so. Congratulations. Rick never learns, he never learns. Alright, Heidi.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes for October 16th, 2023 regular meeting, and the November 8th, 2023 special meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Minewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sanabreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have a public hearing on proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, 2023-3396, an ordinance adopting the River Center South redevelopment plan for Block 1131, lots 30, 31, and 32, within the exit 109 redevelopment plan area.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so, I'll call on you one at a time, just come up to the, I'm gonna go to you first. Just come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Dr. Laura Smith-Staines, I'm at 204 River Edge Road in Titten Falls. I'm here tonight representing Save Our Swimming River, or SOS. We are a concerned group of residents from Titten Falls, Lynn Croft, Greater Middletown, and beyond, fighting to minimize development and preserve the Swimming River. I'm here to publicly voice our concerns over the redevelopment of the River Center Office complex located at 331 Newman Springs Road, otherwise known as Block 1131, lots 30 to 32. We disagree that this area is truly in need of redevelopment. The only criteria met was for low occupancy, but that was during the two years during the peak of COVID, when a vast majority of office buildings, not only throughout the U.S., but the world, were vacant. In fact, I drove through last week, and according to the sign, it seems only one office is currently vacant, and the parking lots are quite full. We are requesting that the parcels in question be reevaluated for this designation. Furthermore, the proposed plans offer very little to update these office buildings, which were the focus for the need of the redevelopment, but rather focus on squeezing in a large apartment complex between the steep slope adjacent to the Swimming River and the Garden State Parkway. The Asbury Park Press article from last week touts a recently renovated amenity building that houses a fitness center, cafe, conferencing center, and tenant lounge, which sounds lovely, but it's slated to be torn down for this housing complex. We are concerned about the omission of an environmental impact discussion on this project when Middletown went to great lengths as stewards of the land by Sloan Kettering. With two sets of nesting bald eagles just across the river, as well as ospreys and other threatened and endangered species, it is imperative we identify and protect these animals. Further, the river itself and the Swimming River natural area, which is just across the river, deserve protection. As such, we are formally requesting an environmental impact study be performed. We are concerned that the current infrastructure and services are not equipped to manage the decreased quality of surface water runoff into the river. It is my understanding that the stormwater drainage need not be updated for redevelopment, as well as the increased demands on drinking water, sewage, energy, vehicular traffic, and schools, to name a few. We are formally requesting updated studies and confirmation from the respective utilities that this redevelopment can be adequately supported without decreasing services to the existing community. We are concerned about the development of a walking path along the river, one that would only serve to make the apartments and business park more appealing to those residents and employees. Increased litter, animal waste, and food foot traffic will serve to degrade the natural environment, creating more pollution and deterring wild animals from using the land. Finally, we are very concerned that there has been such a lack of transparency surrounding this project from its inception. Titten Falls residents especially have been kept in the dark. These are residents within 200 feet of the project who were notified over a year after the land had already been redesignated, and just as the master plan had been updated, giving them no opportunity to be part of this decision-making process. Last month for the October 16th meeting, I personally checked the agenda that morning, and this project was not scheduled for a first reading. Shortly before the meeting, it was added, so very few of any residents or concerned community members could have the opportunity to attend. In the special planning board meeting last week, I didn't see it posted before there was suddenly an agenda. Why did the River Center plan disappear from the planning board redevelopment page? And why was the proposed plan attached to the agenda taken down and updated with the change of document date, without a change of document date, the day of the special meeting? It is the responsibility of the governing body to be open and clear about the proposed projects in town and the process for approvals. Since we can't go back in time, we are requesting that the agendas for town meetings be finalized at least 24 hours in advance. And we, the residents of River Edge Road in Titten Falls and Parkway Place in Middletown, who are immediately adjacent, would especially like to be notified of any project developments relating to these parcels. Further, I would like to ask of you, if you could please outline the process for us for the remainder of the approval process for this project, where does this go next, and which feature of the plan will be evaluated?
Thank you very much.
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, and then we'll get there. In closing, I would just like to stress that this office park is not in need of redevelopment, and the proposed development does not belong here. I look forward to receiving the studies and reports requested tonight on behalf of Save Our Swimming River, and thank you. So if you could please walk me through the process, thank you.
Brian, you wanna handle the process by which that'll occur?
Oh, sorry, sorry. The investigation study process was completed in early 2022. At that time, there was a determination of there being substantial vacancies in the buildings. Keep in mind that the redevelopment investigation study covers the entire redevelopment area, not just the buildings on the south side. The redevelopment area consists of everything on, over by Schultz Lane, where the vet hospital's being redeveloped right now, right behind the Lifetime Fitness, which was a separate redevelopment project as well, and then also the south side of Newman Springs Road, which is where you're referring to and which this specific redevelopment plan governs. So the redevelopment plan is specific to a certain, there are different plans for different areas within the global redevelopment area. But that is a criteria under the redevelopment law which was put into place, that is a valid criteria. There were significant tenants, such as JCPN L, which left for Bell's Works, Mazer Consulting on Colliers, which left for Bell Works, and other tenants which vacated all those buildings actually prior, that process started prior to COVID, so it wasn't actually a result of COVID. The, so those, you know, those happened over a year and a half ago. The redevelopment plans were adopted for across the street over a year and a half ago. Under the redevelopment law, there's no notices, even if you are within 200 feet. Only the property owners themselves get notice for the investigation study, and then for the redevelopment plan, it's just ordinance notice as well. So there are no 200-foot notices under the redevelopment law. I don't even think that, I don't even know, there would be, so next in the process, if the redevelopment plan is adopted tonight, there'll have to be redevelopment agreement entered as well, and then after that, they can make an application for site plan approval to the planning board. So the application for site plan approval to the planning board, that's where specific issues would be, that would require a 200-foot notice, so anybody within 200 feet of the property would get a 200-foot notice of the site plan application before the planning board, and that's also where more specific issues would be addressed, such as stormwater runoff and those calculations, and anything of that specific of a nature. The redevelopment plan itself establishes the zoning for the site, but doesn't deal with traffic considerations per se, doesn't deal with all the stormwater runoff, more specific issues, that would all be part of the site plan application process, which there would be a 200-foot notice of.
So you did mention the zoning there. Will it be rezoned, or does this designation negate the need to rezone?
The redevelopment plan is what rezones the site, that establishes the zoning for the site. So this is the zoning stage of the process. So there has to still be site plan applications before anybody could, you know, develop anything on the site, so. And then before that, there has to be a redevelopment agreement entered between the municipality and the redeveloper, but that can't take place until a plan is adopted. And then that sets forth any other specific requirements that the township is imposing that the redevelopment law allows. So that, I think, I think that answers most of your questions.
Yeah.
And some of those items that you mentioned, you know, we, there are certain ones that we've already requested, right? Economic impact study, traffic study, those are all things that.
Environmental.
Well, that one I was holding till last, because, you know, I think that, number one, they're the ones that are gonna have to get DEP approval, right, on everything that they're doing. We don't supersede, obviously, DEP. And the other part is, the planning board can also set forth in their resolution, if there was a request by the public, to have place of conservation easement. You know, those are all things that can be done along certain areas of that project. So I know you mentioned that you were opposed to like the walkway, for example.
Right.
And, you know, that's a perfectly legitimate, you know, thing to be opposed to, obviously. But what can happen at the planning board level that the township committee does not have the authority to do, is set any type of conservation easements as a part of the resolution that would come with any type of an approval for that site plan approval. So that would be something that you can request at the planning board meeting, in that, you know, the members of the planning board, I have one designee on the planning board that I can communicate with, but it's one of those things that that request and those items that Mr. Nelson mentioned, would all be at the site plan meeting within the planning board itself.
And then I have one further question. Newman Springs Road is a county road, from my understanding, so then where does the county come in to the approvals process?
They, just like any other project on a municipal, on a, within Middletown or any other municipality, it will have to go before the county planning board.
Okay, and that is after our, the Middletown Planning Board?
That will take place. Go ahead, Tom.
It usually happens during the review process, so they kind of can run simultaneously.
Okay.
It's usually towards the end of the process, and they go to the county planning board for a review of impacts on county roads and impacts on county drainage systems. That's the limited scope of the county planning board review.
Okay. And then residents within 200 feet would not be notified of county meetings, we would have to just keep an eye on that agenda?
If you stay in touch with the planning department, they can let you know when the county planning board meetings are scheduled for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? I'll come to you next, sir. No, no, you're already up here.
Doug Tomchuck, I'm a resident of Parkway Place, adjacent to Block 1131, so we're right in the neighborhood here, but I'm really disappointed to be here tonight. I think the township committee is likely going to approve this. I just sat in a planning board meeting where they wouldn't even listen to a comment. It was not a public meeting, I guess, but we didn't have a forum to discuss anything with them.
Just so you know, sir, and I'm gonna let you finish, but that is a master plan review. So they are simply taking and saying that the redevelopment plan complies with the township's master plan.
So I do recognize that there were all sorts of errors in that plan, if you reviewed it, and, you know, I tried to make that available to the planning board beforehand, and nothing was changed of that. They changed the cover, put a pretty picture with cherry blossoms on the front. So anyhow, I stand here against such an approval. Little bit of, for a second here, let me, you know, say from my perspective, what has happened is basically, a developer has come in and buys the properties in June 2021, and promptly starts negotiating with the township to let them add a multi-story residential housing to the property. Maybe it was before they bought it, I don't know that. Okay, the ability to change the use on the property under redevelopment laws is all based on the premise of low occupancy. However, the township's own report in March 2022 estimated that these three buildings had a 75% occupancy rate, pretty good for 2021 data. And we actually see in yesterday's Asbury Park Press that there are many new leases for these buildings, but of all that is basically irrelevant, because the township already passed the redevelopment plan. So, you know, we don't even get to argue that point anymore. So we missed the boat there. The notification on that was there, I guess, if we knew to read it, you know, all the notices, but residents did not know about that process. So today, we get to change the zoning, but ironically, the redevelopment plan we discussed tonight, it keeps all this underutilized office space, except for the one smaller, recently remodeled building that is in the way of the apartment building. So that's the only one that gets knocked down. We keep all those other office spaces that are underutilized, but the reason for the redevelopment. So I have several requests, and I realize some of these may be for the planning board issues, but I wanted to include them now for the record. Please don't put a path along the river to our backyards. Such a path will not be maintained, will be used for new residents to walk their dogs, but given the natural aspects of it, they'll probably leave their waste behind. Pico coliform contamination is a big problem for many Monmouth County streams, and the cliff along the river will be an attractive nuisance and potentially dangerous to kids. Two, traffic, I should say this about five times, traffic. We need traffic studies to take into account the added traffic from Lifetime Gym, as well as these, so we can't really do that study until the gym is operational and has some occupancy there, to understand what the flow is gonna be out of there, and which direction it's gonna go. As we discussed on the telephone, Mayor Perry, that, you know, there's an assumption that everybody's gonna be going to the Parkway, but I'm not sure if the Fairhaven and Rumsen residents aren't gonna be joining this gym. So potential increased occupancy rates in the buildings, as well as the residents, and anything else that is added to this project, will also be, you know, add to the traffic. So if built, can we get a light that will allow Parkway Place cars to trigger a signal, like what used to be at the Bell Corps? Not on all the time, but to trigger something so we can make a turn out of our street, because it's dangerous now.
A traffic light at Parkway Place, you said?
That was, that's a suggestion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, I'm trying to find something that could, you know, make it manageable to get in and out. And can we make the road that connects the Extended Stay America lot with the River Center Parking? There's a small access road for, so that Extended Stay people can make a left out of their property, and make that one way, so it can only be exiting Extended Stay and not for a side route out of the River Center Plaza, the River Center Parking. Excuse me. And especially if a drive-through restaurant is put next door. Please, no Starbucks, no drive-through restaurant right in that adjacent parking lot to the Extended Stay America. The addition of a Starbucks or fast food joint right next to the Extended Stay America changes the whole neighborhood, and the traffic patterns will really be detrimental to all the residents on our street. I don't see the need for that there, there's plenty of other places to go. I just don't understand that, you know, why that's in this redevelopment plan. Several parts of the proposed apartment building that extend toward the embankment along Swimming River should be eliminated, it's too big for the area and too close to the natural resource, something that this committee has said it valued at other potential development locations. This is an ecologically higher value area considering potential impacts to the Swimming River. Okay, and then one thing that the board should address, this board, I think, that, I think all the other ones were kind of planning issues. So please discuss the tax exemption process and what revenues the town would generate from taxes versus the annual service charges. It seems that we would actually be subsidizing the developer to build these apartments. I'm against the apartments and what has always been a business park zoning. I'm really against subsidizing the developer to build apartments there, so the town gets so little in return for this. Please reject this proposal. I did say that.
Yeah, she did, he did. I'm not sure I'm understanding the subsidy you're referring to. The last item that you said.
Yes, you normally signed a contract with redevelopment properties?
Yeah, that's just, that's just for the vet hospital, though.
That's just for the vet?
Just for what we're, what we refer to as the north.
Okay.
We're unable to negotiate any type of, what you're referring to is a pilot, with someone without a redevelopment plan. You can't negotiate that without a plan, there's no.
So, once you approve tonight, you can start negotiating?
You can.
Okay. Does the board plan to negotiate such a plan with this developer and give a tax exemption?
There's no, there's no tax exemption, sir. Pilots are not tax, you're not tax exempt.
Okay, well, you don't pay the property tax, and there's.
You do. You absolutely pay, you still pay property taxes. The Red Bank Vet will still, is absolutely paying property taxes.
I thought they just.
I think to the tune of like $200,000.
I thought they just pay the annual service.
$191,000 for a year.
About, yeah, about $200,000 a year.
That's what, that's not, that's not an exemption, they're still paying that.
It's, it's a.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the word exempt means that it comes off of the regular rolls, but they're still paying, and they're paying more than what they were paying before, actually. So it depends, all of those have to be determined. Right now, this property is not eligible for a tax exemption, tax abatement, pilot, whatever you wanna refer to it as. After a redevelopment plan, that can be negotiated, after a redevelopment agreement is entered, that can be negotiated. One important factor here that I think has been absent from the discussion so far this evening, is that this is part of the township's affordable housing plan. There were plans to actually build significantly more units there than what are presented and allowed for in this plan. There could have been 1,000 units. There could have been 1,000 units there, actually. And that's something that the committee did not want to see there. The township's actually in the midst of two builders remedy cases right now on properties that are not developed, that the township is trying to prevent the development of right now. And, and this particular development is being completely constructed on, at what's now existing buildings in asphalt. So, and not exceeding under the redevelopment plan any of the existing heights for the buildings that are there now, too. So, so there are often, when there are affordable housing components to these projects, which there is here, there are often tax abatement agreements, financial agreements that are negotiated to help subsidize that affordable housing, which the township is constitutionally required to do. So it is a unique site, and that's, given that circumstance.
They're still paying.
But they're still paying.
There's no, only nonprofits, or, and I guess I should say technically approved farms, farmland assessments, receive reductions in property taxes where, where they're, they don't have to pay property taxes.
Okay, let me just say that the whole process there and, you know, the exemption, you know, the ordinance 3376 that was passed this July for the veterinary thing, you know, it's like reading that, trying to interpret it as a layman is difficult to do.
I hear you.
I'm trying to catch up with it. I mean, the, the law, you know, seems to say that you can have these annual service charges that don't exempt from all taxes, but, you know, take steps about what the payments that would be made. And I just wanted to, you know, ensure that my statement is made that this isn't going to be negotiated with this developer for building more, building apartments in an area that, you know, has been a business park, you know, traditionally, and shouldn't need that. And they'll still have all those same business buildings there, you know, so why do they need to do this? What is that incentive from the town for? Now, if you're saying that incentive is for the low-cost housing, we're getting 34 units out of this, how many does the state request? Right now, 700, I think you said, Mayor Perry?
700?
I don't know, how many?
Our obligation for just the third round is approximately 1,026 units.
Okay.
We have a significant number of credits towards that already, but we still have to plan at these other sites, which is why this is one of a number of sites that are in our affordable housing plan, such as the redevelopment project at Belford, this site. So, so we have to have sites to satisfy that obligation. And the township has been attempting to direct that development at sites that are already developed, rather than at sites which are in the woods, such as the site that they're looking to develop just up the road at Exit 114, which is completely wooded by, behind Sloan Kettering.
You don't know much about environmental matters, sir. I have to say, if you think that that's the environmentally sensitive spot. Let me just say that the waterway is much more environmentally sensitive, okay?
Well, wooded area is still environmentally sensitive, there's plenty.
But actually, where the tributaries that feed into the Swimming River actually begin at that site. So I might know a little bit more about it. In fact, we have environmental consultants that we're paying thousands and thousands of dollars for to review those issues for us right now, to address this, because it actually feeds, that site actually feeds directly into the Swimming River. So, you know, we can be cute and make personal tax, but I'm just stating the facts.
Okay, I work in the environmental field, too, so I have some idea of some of these things and, and recognize that development in the upper portions of watershed for migratory fish species, which I did comment on to the New Jersey GEP when, in their coastal zone management process. So I think that there are factors there in the upper watershed.
And that, and that is fully on DEP, like, DEP's permitting is, that, that's, that's this redevelopers issue? That, that's, that's.
I'm just trying to go back to Mr. Nelson's comment, though, about the low-cost housing. And we get 34 units out of this. Why was it decided that it was 1 in 10? Isn't that, couldn't it be as low as 1 in 4? Or if we're trying to actually address the low-cost housing situation, or are we trying to, you know, I'm not sure where we're trying to go with that. You know, why, why is, why is that number set?
Those numbers, I mean, typically, it's actually more. The problem is that when you have more, if it's 1 in 4, 20% set aside, then you need more market rate housing units to subsidize the affordable housing.
For every, for every one affordable unit, you need four market rate units to pay for that.
But this one has nine market rate units for every subs, you know, low-cost unit.
No, for, for every, for every one market, it's 10% of the total, total number of units. So if, if we wanted to increase that number, that increase that percentage, then that means that they have to increase the number of market rates that they have to build. This township committee negotiated the number of units down from 1,000 to where we are today.
I think you're looking at that the wrong way, I'm not sure, but if they have, they have 1 in 10 right now, 10% of them are low-cost units.
Correct.
So we get 34 units out of this.
Correct.
So if you're. Credits, so they're designed to be supportive units, so there's, 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 units and credits aren't exactly the same always. So if you have a rental unit, that's for supportive housing, which these are designed to be, then you can get bonus, what are known as bonus credits. So each of these units is designed to achieve three credits per unit. If it's just a regular affordable rental unit, that's not a supportive housing unit, then you may be able to get a, just a standard double credit. And then if it's neither of those, if it's a for-sale unit, you can just get a single credit. And so, so it's designed to, as the mayor is saying, it's designed to minimize the number of units overall at the site, because if you, you know, if you add more units with fewer, you know, to achieve higher more credits, you're going to need more market rate units to help subsidize those affordable units, because they're not collecting the same rent on them as they collect on the market units. But it's really an economics issue.
So we're worried about the developer there, that they, basically, the township.
Trying to look at the impact.
No, I think, I think, I think what you're advocating for right now is more units.
Well, no, I'm just trying to say, it's just.
I'm just saying math is, is black and white.
I don't, I don't see that, you could still keep it 340 units and get more, you know, lower cost units if you wanted to. You're laughing at me, but.
For every, for every unit that you're adding, for every affordable unit that you're adding, you're adding four more affordables, you're adding four more market rates.
But we're at 1 to 9 right now.
If they filed.
Yes.
I, I, I'm not sure if you're advocating for more units or.
No, I would, I would like very much not to have any units. But right now, there, let's just take, you know, there's 340 units right now. And 306 of those will be market rate. So if you're really trying to get low-cost units, you would tell them, no, that's not enough. We should have, you know, 60 low-cost units and still have 340 units, 280 market rates, and still gives you your 1 to 4 ratio, or 4 to 1 ratio.
I mean, you, you can ask for anything, but that doesn't mean that it's going to work.
So, so you'd let them walk.
That's, well, no, then they file a builder's remedy lawsuit, and then I have no say. Then they have 1,000 units with 200 affordable units, so. You can pick, that's what will happen.
I mean, you honestly get to take your pick. We, you can either come to, come to some type of reasonable percentage where the, where the redeveloper is saying, we will do X. Or you say, you know what, you're not coming, we can't come to terms, so we're going to file a builder's remedy suit against you. You're going to go to court, you're, you're going to potentially lose, and then they get to build as many units as they want. And you know what, maybe the redeveloper said, the redeveloper says, you know what? We'll knock down all the, all the buildings, and we'll just build housing right on there. That's the risk you run, and that's the risk we run every single day. So at the end of the day, you, you can, I mean, I want to be respectful to your opinion, and I respect everything that you're saying, but I don't want 1,000 units there either, and I don't think you do. I want to say it's a flip of the coin, but the flip of the coin is better odds than we had if we just said, no, thank you.
Okay.
It's, and it's already in our housing plan. It is in our housing plan to say that, that this, we have designated this area to potentially include housing. So I am not willing to run the risk to say that this individual is going to now keep those office buildings there and just say, it's more profitable for us right now with the rents that they're getting in Red Bank, for the rents that they're getting in, in other areas local to us, to say, you know what? We'll just knock down the office space, and we'll just be done with it, and we'll just build housing there. And there is zero, once that court, once we go into that, zero that the township can do to prevent that builder's remedy suit from coming. It, it's not fun, and if you think any of us up here think that this is like fun, it stresses me out to the point where I don't want to tell you how much hair I've lost. But, you know, I, I sit here and I fully respect your opinion, I really do. But, but I also, we have been working to prevent as much housing on this site as possible. And unless we are willing to, to have that low odds victory of a court settlement in a builder's remedy case on this site in particular, I'm, I'm not going to be the one that sits up here and says that 1,000 units is stood there, I'm just not.
Right, okay, thank you for your time there. I think there were some, the comment about the 4 to 1 just was very confusing to me.
That, that's like, that, that is just the, that's normally the ratio of how much a developer will have to do in order to build one unit.
Right, and here it's, it's 9 to 1, and that's great. So I'm glad that that's the direction you're going as far as keeping the number of units down. But, you know, I think that, you know, all I was trying to do is point out that there is the option of having less of the market rate ones, which then I guess raises the potential concern. I don't want to rehash what.
I got you, I appreciate your comments, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I want to let other people have an opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, sir. He had his hand raised before, so.
That's okay, I don't mind going in a different order. My name is Gordon Brown, I live at 228 River Edge Road, Tintin Falls. So thank you for allowing us to speak, I appreciate it. First of all, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too.
Things of respect here. Okay, so I just want to briefly say that I agree with and fully support the statements that my neighbor Laura Smith said just a few minutes ago. Just to, I guess, summarize things a little bit, you know, those, particularly those of us in the, in our community that have, that are adjacent to the river and look across at this building, this land that we're talking about, have concerns about, you know, building heights, lights spillage, traffic, possible adverse effects on what really is a pristine river back behind our houses, and the safety of the kids that might go there. So I mean, I personally think that your objectives of trying to get affordable housing into this area are quite noble, and I think that there's a lot of merit to this site, it kind of makes sense to me. There are a lot of good reasons that that's probably a good place to try to put some of those sites, some of that housing. But at the end of the day, all we're asking for, I think, I think, maybe others would disagree, but all I think we're asking for is that you be good neighbors in the way you go about doing it. Try to, try to think about the impacts on the surrounding areas, Parkway Place, Tintin Falls, and with an end, et cetera, et cetera, and reflect that in your conversations with your colleagues on the planning board. I understand that the details are going to be in the planning board, and thank you for the description of the process. That helps, I think, all of us a lot, because it's a very convoluted thing, right?
It is.
So, you know, I think that's it, just, we appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns. We would appreciate it if you could try to make sure that the planning board gives us adequate notice in future meetings, and try to be there and present our case to them as well.
Yeah, I believe you had, for a site plan, it's, you will be notified for a site plan approval.
If you're within 200 feet.
Within 200 feet of the property.
With the, with the width of the river at that point, that actually turns out to be a relatively small number of us, but, but, yeah. It's okay.
At least one will get it, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, especially if it's that one.
Word, I'm sure, will travel fast.
Anyway, and last but not least, congratulations on your state champs, that was great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate your comments. Yes, sir. Your name and address.
Yeah, sure, no problem. My name is Mitch Colbert, 21 Cedar Place, Tintin Falls. I'll be really quick, I really just want to follow up on something. You guys were doing the whole math thing with the affordable housing before.
Yes.
You said that certain units, you know, get three credits and some get two. So I just want to make sure, 34 credits, number of actual units where somebody might live, sounds like it's less than that, sounds like it's closer to 10 or 11 based on the credits, I was.
So this is 340 units, right?
Right.
The 10% is.
34.
So even if they were straight 34 rental units, you'd get 68 credits.
Right, but I thought.
So there are other types of units, though, that sometimes are put into these supportive housing units. Maybe a special needs population takes a unit, you get extra credit for those. So we don't know, that might happen, we can't, that's all.
Okay, all right, so you don't really, you don't have that number, it's 34 credits, but, okay, depending.
At minimum, it's 34 units. 34 units is 68 credits.
Right.
If they're rentals.
I was going, I was just about to leave. You said at the minimum, there'll be 34 units, and I just, and by the way, I'm not going to argue one way or the other, just trying to get, trying to get it clear. Is it a minimum of 34 credits or 34 units, right? So if they built 34 accessible units, they'd get 90 something credits.
Yeah, so 340 units, so at, at minimum, at the one credit to one unit ratio, you'll get 34 credits, depending on what is decided, whether it's supportive housing and any of the other legalese that comes along with the rules, or I really should say lack of rules and lack of clarity when it comes to COA and affordable housing, that, that number will change, I'm sure, because there will be maybe some variation of rentals to whatever.
So it's, so it's minimum of 34 units, and you could have up to, let's say, 96 credits or something? It's not a maximum of 34 credits. Yeah, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, in other words, it's not, I was, I was concerned that it was, you were maxing out at 34 credits, which means it might only be 10 units times 3, okay, good enough, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name, I'm good, thank you. My name is Esther Nelson, I'm a resident of Parkway Place in Lincoln Rock, Middletown. And I want to say thank you for answering our questions, I really appreciate that you're taking the time to also answer not, I didn't realize that would be a part of the process, I thought we only had to, to read or make a statement. So I, I wanted to say, I did go to the township planning meeting last week, and that was, what they said was a review of the proposed plan for conformance to the Middletown Master Plan. The consultant who presented addressed the requirements for the 2004 and the 2016 Middletown Township Master Plan, but he didn't mention any consideration for conformance to a newer version of the plan or the proposed master plan, which I think it's being revised.
It is, we're, we're in the, we're in the first stages, we just actually awarded. It's, it's normally, the master plan is normally done every 10 years, 8 to 10 years. A full comprehensive effort of the master plan is normally done in that timeframe, but there's variations that you do, you know, depending on the climate, you know, of what you see on the, on the horizon in terms of amending your master plan. But we just recently awarded the contract to an engineering firm to help us with the next master plan that we're doing. So we're working under the current master plan, because we are in the infant stages of our next master plan.
Okay, that helps, thank you, I'm trying to understand. I wanted to acknowledge that it was said, I think Laura mentioned. So this redevelopment plan will then be pulled into, well, I'm sorry, I jumped.
This redevelopment plan will only, will only dictate zoning over.
These lots.
Block 1131, lots 30, 31, and 32. It does not, it does not carry over into any other parcels within the municipality or boundaries of the township of Middletown.
And is there any possibility that, because it's already been, I'm trying to understand, so the area for redevelopment was Exit 109, but there were three separate redevelopment plans. One was the Lifetime, one was the area on Schultz Road on the north side, and then this on the south side. But it was determined all three. But it was determined all three needed to be redeveloped.
No.
No? This one is still being determined? That's what I'm interested in.
Yeah, yeah, two of the three. Lifetime Fitness was not, uh, did not have a redevelopment plan.
Oh, that was not.
No, um, it it, we had a redevelopment investigation into it. Yeah, it it, but it didn't achieve the same criteria that the, that these two north and south parcels that that we've been referring to. It didn't hit those um, those uh, criteria.
To be eligible. So the el, the criteria that triggered these two were the occupancy rates of the buildings, correct?
Correct.
So, and and they were looked at. So I I'm so I'm surprised because I I thought that the the Lifetime would have met that.
So so were we. Yeah, it did.
The law changed from the time that was, the Lifetime was the first of the three areas to be investigated. The law actually changed subsequent. That actually started a lot long, I mean, everybody sees it getting built now.
It was two thousand.
That started years before the, you know, physical construction everybody sees now. So yeah, and that was subject to a couple of years of litigation as well that we won.
Thank you. I wanted to just acknowledge what Laura had said about the version of the document changing online. It did change that day. Debbie of the planning board uh, office did actually let me know. But the only thing that was apparent that changed was the cover page changed, the photograph. But why it changed and and that it's not referenced, the date, I think the township could do better on document version control and notifying people if there's different versions of a document we're referring to and approving or voting on or reviewing. Because what else might have changed besides the photo on the front? I I I think that the traffic problems on Newman Spring roads are very significant. I I really think that adding additional units, three hundred and forty at approximately multi-capacity, you know, I don't know how many people will live in that. So the number of cars that will be turning in and out will will add to the congestion. And I I really look forward to trying to be proactive about adding to the congestion to five twenty. Our street, it's very hard to turn out, particularly during rush hour and either left or right. And if there's any way that we can address that situation, I don't know. Traffic light is not likely. I mean, that's an idea, but I mean, I don't know if there's another way that we could figure out how to help control the flow as as more people commute to the the New Vet Hospital and 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 the Lifetime traffic. I I don't see how that will help. I feel like we get gotten sometimes are are part of the township. People think we're Tintin Falls, but we are Middletown.
Tintin Falls touches a lot of other towns. And I think some people in Tintin Falls think that they're a part of other towns, too.
Right, no, that's true.
No other town touches Middletown and also Ocean Township. Or Wall, yeah.
I'm I have to admit, I'm not an expert on the geography.
But I think it was Doug that mentioned the tra, traffic light on Parkway Place, yeah.
Yes.
I got, I got it down.
Yeah, I mean, they they added as part of the Parkway Extension, another traffic light. So just going from like our house westbound on five twenty, we have five lights.
I lived on Davis Lane for a long time.
Half a mile, it's a little, yes. I don't know if that's the answer, is all I'm saying. In the uh, the drive through restaurant would also really add traffic flow. I I don't, I, the the access lane that was referred to from, from the Extendus America to the river center was only added because as part of the planning process, then there was a requirement that people staying at the hotel should be able to go left out of the hotel and they could not make that left. So that to resolve that issue, they added the access road. So now if we add three hundred and forty units to addition, and people are going to be using that, we have to be mindful of that flow. I don't understand, we're keeping all the buildings. So the redevelopment in that area is just adding. Is that correct?
It's just eliminating the one small building. What the um.
That is open for business. If people didn't know, they're open for breakfast and lunch Monday to Friday. Just thought I meant.
Time being, I guess.
Well, for the, it's really pretty nice, actually.
Yeah, it's, I I think it, yeah, so the the it would eliminate the, I think it's twenty thousand square feet of of that building.
Okay. And 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 is it possible? And five, you said that, I heard that the footprint couldn't be taller than the existing structures. The tallest building there is three feet, not five. And I think in the plan, the proposed height was five feet, five stories. So that's two stories higher.
No, those buildings are four stories.
So it's still higher?
Yeah.
So the parking wouldn't be counted as a story, is that why? Or is it an actual footage? Is is there a reason that they changed the plan from two buildings to one longer building?
We reduced the number of units almost, well, by more than half.
And and in the, in the document that the the planning meeting, the redevelopment plan listed three hundred and ninety units, and now it says three hundred and forty units. So that's not.
That was a way to reduce the, the to to reduce the number of units was to go down to one building, so there'd be less uh, site disturbance. So that that was the change.
But that's not half, that's fifty.
We started, we started off at nine hundred.
On that property? With with all the office buildings remaining?
Correct. And now we sit here at three hundred and forty.
You know, everyone should remember one thing about all this that we're talking about with affordable housing requirements. In thirteen months,
It starts all over again.
Get a new obligation from from the, well, from the Supreme, from the court, basically. Uh, we get a new obligation number. So it, this is a never ending process. So if that bothers people, call your legislator.
Today. And we could tell you a great, we could tell you a great story about when people opposed the project that delayed it into COVID. That is now where we had an affordable housing settlement. And then they delayed the project, killed the project. And then now we have a proposal for a thousand more units right across the street where the clown is. So which was supposed to be three hundred thousand square feet of commercial development. But because of a lawsuit that was filed that delayed that for two years, then brought it into COVID and killed that project, we now have a proposal and a lawsuit to build a thousand units there. So I always tell people, be careful what you wish for when you oppose something, because then the the result, we had another project like that, too, where the um, was it the Century Twenty One? There was a proposal that I have a Century Twenty One store on Route thirty five.
Which, by the way, I had to look up what that was, not gonna lie. I had never heard.
The neighborhood opposed. And then we had a, you know, builder come in with the affordable housing project that, you know, forced the township's hand through the courts to build, I forget how many hundreds of units there now, too. So it's a very dangerous game to play.
What I, what I hope, yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
What I, what I hope everybody understands is, is that no one like, you know, no one is cheering. What what we are trying to do is minimize the impact in in throughout the town. Right? Um, and and that's why we have to be reasonable and good stewards to show the Supreme Court and and the courts that we appear before, that we are not just sitting here saying, no. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, it's in areas, you're going to have to understand that you're going to have to create credits and 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 go through this process. And it it's of my opinion that I would rather do that in areas that are already developed. You know, I I'm not opposed to redevelopment. I'm opposed to development. Because when the, and the difference is is critical, is that there's only so many acres of undisturbed land left in Middletown. Um, and when we went in two thousand and eighteen, before I was the mayor, um, and into two thousand and nineteen, we were negotiating with with fair share to try and create areas that were already developed. And and say, hey, let's make this mixed use. Let's do, let's do this here. And they said, no, no, I don't want that. I don't want that. It 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 bothers me to my core that we are in the position, because the legislature won't get off, get off their butts and find a solution to this problem. Because it is a big problem. I've talked to Declan O'Scanlan, I've talked to Senator Gopau, I've talked to Senator Singleton, I've talked to the governor about this. You know, it it, Republicans and Democrats are are equally at fault on this, because nobody wants to get this done. And it's about time that Trenton finally does something that the people of this state need, and that is a real reform when it comes to housing quotas. Because they're destroying every single day that goes by, that no one does anything about this. You're destroying another acre of land, you're you're destroying another environmentally sensitive area. You're you're going to destroy them. And we, I wouldn't fight two builders remedy suits at the same time if I didn't feel like Middletown was worth fighting for. Like Monmouth County wasn't worth fighting for. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna get my head kicked in in court, and poor Brian is gonna have to be the one that takes it if we don't at least show that we're willing to put housing somewhere. Where should that be? It should be in places that are already partially or developed commercially. It should not be on places that have zero development on them.
Uh, no one is asking for that in this.
I I I, listen, I I think everything that you that you folks have asked for is is completely reasonable. And I hope that you show up to the planning board meeting. I hope that you ask for all the things that are necessary from the planning perspective. But I just want you to understand that the position that we're in. I'm willing to fight every single day. I will fight for this town every single day for the betterment of, for the betterment of this town. But there's forces that are above us that we have said, no, 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 constantly to. But we need, truly need comprehensive reform when it comes to housing quotas before any of, all the things that you are saying are exactly the things that I have said. Exactly the things that I have gone into Senate offices, that I have talked to the governor about, I have done all these things. And and I don't blame you for having the position that you do. But the, having the full picture is a lot easier than not knowing any of the things that I just told you. And and I just, I'm I'm being straight up with everybody that's here. They they are going to build a thousand units on that, on that parcel. They are going to squeeze every single housing structure they can onto that, onto that, regardless of of building height, regardless of your environmental concerns, regardless of traffic flow, we will lose that case because they will say that Middletown hates to build affordable housing, which is so beyond the truth. It's not even funny anymore. Because I've read it, I've seen it, I've heard it, people have said the same thing to me, and I've seen opinion pieces out there, but it couldn't be farther from the truth. I voted for redevelopment plans that included affordable housing in them. But we are, we are in a catch twenty two, but that catch twenty two only kills Middletown in the end. And and for those of you that are Tintin Falls residents, it's only going to kill you too, because Tintin Falls is going to have to do the same thing. And Middletown is going to, is going to have to be forced to build on areas that are right up against your border, that are right up against Holmdel's border, that are right up against Hazlitt's border, that are right up against Atlantic Island's border. Fix this problem. We're trying to do the best we can by preventing a thousand units from going here, a thousand units from going on Village Thirty Five, five hundred units from going on at exit one fourteen. And the, I'm sorry, and you you're gonna, you can say what it, what, all that you'd like to, but I I hope everybody knows that I I have been screaming about this issue since two thousand and nineteen. And I'm only one person, and I'm just a country mayor. I'm just a country mayor. But this is something that that I I think is personal, because I I think they're trying to, I think they're trying to to beat down bu, bucolic places like Middletown. I think they're trying to, I think they're trying to beat us. And and I think it it is, it is beyond fair at this point. So I will stop pontificating and standing on my soapbox here.
Thank you for.
But I hope you all send a a clip of that to your your respective legislator.
Thank, thank you for sharing. I appreciate that. I'm just curious, I I can't speak to all of Middletown. I really mostly know more about Lencroft, but with Four Ponds, how many affordable housing, housing units are in Four Ponds?
I I'm I'm so glad you brought that up.
You're gonna say, and and you're gonna say, but oh, oh.
You, I I.
And what about the other Bam Hollow? I mean, I know people are out.
Perfect, both perfect example. Both perfect example. You know why no affordable was done there? Because the state had no rules. When the, we had an approved housing plan, and then the state went, I'm out, like a blackjack dealer when it came to affordable housing. I'm done. No one had any rules anymore. So then you have municipalities, five hundred and sixty five municipalities, that don't know what they're doing. You have five hundred and sixty five municipalities waiting for the Supreme Court to make a decision on something that we have no clue what you're doing. So what do we do? We've, we make settlement agreements with them. Oh, okay, well, you're, you want to build? There's no rules from the state. There's no rules from from COA. COA was abolished, basically. And now it's, it was just up to nine Supreme Court justices that if you were walking down the street, you'd have no idea that you just walked past a Supreme Court justice. They're not answerable to anybody, and they're making these decisions. So why, why was that? Why did that happen? Because at that point in time, COA had been abolished and 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 eliminated, basically. And it was thrown to the courts, and the courts hadn't put out the rules. But time still keeps going on. People still keep working. You didn't stop working because COA didn't, COA didn't exist anymore. It's like when the federal government shuts down, like, you know? People will, well, most people will go back to work, right? But, but again, it it's, the the state always thinks that it can just, I I got an idea, you know? And and then all of a sudden, like, they think that all municipalities stopped doing what they're doing because the state just said, eh, we're done with that.
Those, those were both specifically sites that were, Bam Hollow especially tried to intervene into our housing plan in two thousand and nine and tried to stop us from securing approval of our housing plan at that time, because they wanted to build fourteen hundred units at Bam Hollow. Then we got our housing plan approved by COA, but then the courts threw that plan out. And then, and then we were able to come to a settlement which preserved a hundred acres of open space that the township now owns there and built the houses that are there, which is far less, about, what, a hundred ninety houses? Single family homes there now and a hundred acres of open space that the township owns now, rather than fourteen hundred townhouses that they were planning to build there and that they were suing the township over to build there. That that site was actually the subject of litigation going back to the early nineteen eighties, believe it or not. And that went until two thousand and nine, after, or two thousand and thirteen, I think, after our housing, we beat them in court. We beat them in administrative hearings before COA. And then we, you know, we finally got to a point where they realized that, you know, then the the COA rules got thrown out, the plan got thrown out. And then that's the only thing that really permitted us to come to a settlement there. Because they weren't going to wait another five or ten years for the Supreme Court to decide, or actually wasn't even until really two thousand and fifteen. So, you know, six years after that. And so, and then same thing with Four Ponds. Four Ponds was actually supposed to have almost twice as many units as there are there, there are there now. They were in our, yeah, they were.
A lot of people in Lencroft.
Yeah, and then so that, that was what ended up there was also the result of a legal, eventual legal settlement in two thousand and thirteen. And I would note that all of these settlements are now being, you know, that they're trying to use against the township, too, in court right now. So, um, so the township's efforts to, you know, limit, you know, and 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 have more reasonable development. You know, it's 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 a never ending fight that the mayor touched upon, so.
You know, one thing to, I think everyone should be aware of is, just because we we've talked about two sites, Bam Hollow and Four Ponds, that don't have affordable housing units. But we do have dozens of projects around town that do have affordable housing. We have many, many, many projects. And every time we dealt with one of those projects, their neighborhood would be here. You weren't at any of those meetings concerned about those units, but they weren't, they're not here tonight because it's not in their neighborhood. That's just the reality of it. So we, 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 I could take any one of you for an entire day and show you all of the affordable housing projects we have around town, uh, far more than most municipalities in New Jersey have done. And so, um, it's not like we haven't, um, taken on our fair share. We haven't built many, many units. We have, but the issue now is it's piling on at this point. And we we've kind of taken the mission, we're still going to bu, build units, but we want to do it at a, at our pace. We want to do it where where it makes sense, not every farm, every undeveloped tract of land in town be rezoned for housing. We want to try to redevelop or redevelop properties. That's our approach to doing it, and and that's the plan going forward.
And I I want to be clear, we're not necessarily. And I wanted to be clear, we're not sitting here only talking about affordable housing, I mean, that came up as a requirement, and that's what's motivating the town to rezone part of this property so that they could put the units. The people are opposed to adding apartment building, not specifically affordable housing.
Totally understand.
So I think that's important to say.
100%. I, not one person has, have I felt, saying that at all, you know, it's, but completely understand your point.
And I was curious, if it's, I know it's not proposed at the plan yet, but how many apartment, how many bedrooms and what size apartments are we expecting here? Is it like three-bedroom units, one-bedroom units, or do we know the distribution, if there's any idea?
That'll be more of a decision made at the planning board level, because it affects the number of parking spaces. So, but with affordable units, there is some requirements that you have to do a certain percentage of one, two, and three-bedroom units. That would be only part of the 34.
Not to the rest of them.
So to be mindful that there will be need for busing for schools to go to that property.
Every single project in town that has affordable housing in it gets bused.
Okay. I know that, just to mention, I know, because my daughter took the bus to Parkway Place, and there was an issue in the hotel at one point, there was a student going to Lincroft Elementary that was living at the hotel, and that was an issue.
And in order to curb the, what currently sits as a, as an overcrowded school of Lincroft Elementary, the Board of Education has stated that these students, any students generated out of this complex would go to River Plaza Elementary School.
So what about current students of Parkway Place?
No, 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 this is only for this River Center building, that wouldn't impact anybody else.
So the zoning for the schools, this one neighborhood would be separate from, I mean, that's news.
Yeah, it's just, it's just to prevent Lincroft, which we know has a, has a current, you know, abundance of students, to go to a school that currently is completely underpopulated, to try and prevent that from exacerbating the problem. Because again, that'll flip in a generation, just what we're, what we're seeing right now is the South Side has much more students than the North Side was. But a generation ago, it was reversed, and now you have all your empty nesters on the North Side, or a higher percentage of them on the North Side, and eventually that will flip too. Sandy didn't really help with that, you know, it kind of stopped that really from going on, because people were buying up those houses and demolishing them and rebuilding, but in an effort to prevent any more students from going there to Lincroft, while this, while this overpopulation exists, these students would be sent to River Plaza, which can easily absorb any students that go there. Yeah, yeah.
Who knows, that's a very good point. What will happen in 10 years from now could be totally different again.
Story of our lives.
It's everybody's life, yeah. I wanted to just acknowledge the environmental issues that were previously stated, and I, if it's possible to reduce the footprint, I know that you're saying that it's already been reduced, I don't, I haven't seen the actual drawings except for what's in that plan, it seems like a pretty big area. So if there's any way to reduce the footprint, that would be helpful, and.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for Rosalyn Carter, too. I'm a fan.
I named my first daughter Reagan, I tried to name my son Carter, just for the sake of having Reagan Carter. I didn't win, I didn't win that battle. All right, any other member of the public, yeah, Melanie, come on down. Twice in one day, what do I owe this honor?
Melanie Elmer-Gur, Green Tree Terrace, in Lincroft, I think I can solve your height issue, because that's offensive to a lot of people, the height of the building, being five stories in front of four. Well, Rutgers recently did a study, and they've advertised this pretty heavily in the last few months, about the number of parking spaces that are given to these kinds of housing developments is way too high, that the state makes that requirement, I think they want like 1.33 units, parking per bedroom or something.
I know, we're talking about Rutgers.
Yeah, because they're saying it should be 1.01 spaces, a 25% less than what's been mandated by the state, and they're really making inroads in trying to get that message received by legislators.
Big part of our master plan that's come, is that what you were gonna say, Tom?
No.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say it anyway. Big part of our master plan coming up, you drive down Route 35, all right, drive down Route 35, the number of parking spaces that are empty in these strips, it's ridiculous, it's ridiculous, it is obscene, because at that time it was like, wow, we have to have so many parking spaces for this place. There was never a need for that. And when you go to the, to the, what, Shopping Center, Stop and Shop Shopping Center on 35, there is, the whole back of the Stop and Shop Shopping Center is all parking. What, for what? Because everyone thought, oh, well, the employees will park in the back, and everyone else will park in the front, yeah, that never happened, that never pans out. So a big part of our master plan is reevaluating the percentage of parking spaces we require based on the square footage of any proposed building that is occurring. So I'll let Merkin Tante tell you what he was apparently gonna say. But, but a big part of our, of our master plan reevaluation will be reducing what Middletown currently requires in terms of parking per square foot.
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, I know the study you're talking about, you know, we've been talking about it for a few years now, and one of, it reveals two things that we've known all along, and the state doesn't get it, that most of these projects generate far fewer cars than people think, than the state thinks, and they also generate far fewer schoolchildren. Usually the concern about projects like this is, oh my God, we're gonna have more kids in the school system, it's gonna, you know, devastate us tax-wise. First of all, Middletown School District has lost thousands of students compared to what it used to have, so you could probably use a few more students. But that being said, these projects generate a much smaller number of schoolchildren, school-age children, than people think. People think, oh, if you build and create an apartment, you're gonna have two children. The reality is, it takes about six units to generate one child. And we've surveyed every multifamily housing development in the township, and we do it every few years, just to make sure the numbers are current, and that number has stayed pretty steady for 20 years now. So they don't have the type of impacts that people think, and yes, I do think you could do less parking. The only thing is, the state has a state regulation called the Residential Site Improvement Standards, you're required to follow. So it gets to be a bit of a debate at the planning board level, as to whether or not you can reduce below what the state requires for parking. Because again, towns don't dictate residential parking requirements anymore, the state took that away 15 years ago, and so we have to abide by that generally.
Do you see momentum towards a change that could perhaps coincide with when this?
I do think it's changing. The other thing that's gonna change, as the mayor was talking about, is commercial parkings, lots, right? I mean, when all those standards were created, there was no such thing as online shopping, there was no such thing as packages from Amazon. So far fewer people are going to stores anymore, and so the parking standards should be reduced accordingly, because we have C asphalt and all these shopping centers, you can go buy any of them, and they're, at best, they're half-built. So that needs to change too, and I'd like to take some of those shopping centers and retrofit them and reduce the amount of pavement and parking we have, and then replace it with open space.
Okay, because if you could get less parking, then the building could be lower.
I don't know if it'd be that much less, but.
At least cut that top floor off, maybe?
So that's a planning board level.
Okay, the other thing is.
I just took a look with Brian, whose computer just died, but I think that there's only a 10-foot difference between the existing buildings, and that's because of the floor plates. Now, I can sit here and pretend like I understand what a floor plate is.
Because most commercial floors, each commercial floor is much higher than a residential floor.
Oh, okay.
So the delta between.
Gotcha.
The existing buildings and this proposed building would be 10 feet.
Okay. What about the DEP application? Is that something that just the planning board keeps abreast of, or does the Township Committee get informed? Because I'm wondering, what if the DEP comes out, because I don't even think they've been out to the site, and what if they don't approve, then what happens? Like, what happens to this application?
That's on them.
That's all on the planning board?
It's a condition of approval, they can't do this without DEP's approval.
Everything moves along through the planning board, through the county planning board, and then, like, why is there no urgency for the DEP to come out right now?
The DEP won't now, they kind of, again, they kind of run all concurrently.
It's all concurrent, okay, because I had thought that they were gonna come out initially just to do the wetlands delineation, and I don't know if that was.
They may, they may come out to do that, but that's a whole different ballgame than the other type of permitting that they, like waterfront development permits and things like that.
So the delineation in itself can't alter what goes to the planning board, perhaps, or?
It can in some cases, in this case it won't, because you have such a steep bank, that the wetlands really aren't gonna extend beyond above the bank, above the top of the bank in this case. In some properties, it can be very extensive and affect the development.
All right, that's all I had, thank you so much.
Thanks, Melanie. This young man, I think, did you have a question, sir? Come on, step forward.
Hello?
How are you?
I'm good, thanks. My name's Zachary Benner, 129 Glenwood Drive. I just, I would like to present a question that I don't think I like heard.
Okay.
It's like, how are the buildings that are already in what you're calling the South Lot?
Step closer to the mic a little bit.
The buildings that are like already in the, what you're calling a South Lot, like those big office buildings, you said that they're mostly like, they have like a low occupation. So like, I'm just wondering, for like the building project, how are those going to be used? Like, are they gonna be knocked down, or are they gonna convert them into housing?
No, those buildings will remain commercial.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, except for the 20,000 square foot auxiliary building that's there, that building will go, but the other three buildings will remain where they currently are.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I just had that question, thank you.
I'm glad you stepped forward. I love when young people come up to the microphone. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? All right, I want to thank all of you very much, this has been a great dialogue, I want to thank you very much. With that, move to close the public portion and approve. Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance on tonight's agenda, we have a public hearing for 2023-3396.
Heidi, hang on, I just want to say again, thank you all very much, I hope you have a great Thanksgiving, thank you all, thanks for your time. Go ahead, Heidi, sorry.
Sure. An ordinance providing funding for various capital improvements for the township of Middletown and appropriating $2,567,500 for such purpose.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2023 dash, which one am I on? 3396B8, I think that should say.
That's a B.
It is a B.
It's a B.
Okay, I've never seen that before. All right. All right, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, we have 2023-3397, bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $2,261,000 for various park improvements by and for the township of Middletown and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $2,147,950 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2023-3397. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our final public hearing, we have 2023-3398, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $5,499,000 for various capital improvements by and for the township of Middletown and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $4,968,813 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2023-3398. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinance 2023-3399, an ordinance establishing fair market value for property identified as Block 835, part of Lot 18, within the township of Middletown, and authorizing acquisition of this property by purchase for eminent domain for the purpose of maintaining open space and enhancing public recreational opportunities.
Motion to introduce.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held December 4th.
Yeah.
December 4th, 2023. At this time, we have a consent agenda. Oh, our first item on this agenda, though, is the New Jersey State Best Practices Survey. If anyone wishes to discuss, we have to do that per state requirement.
Any member of the Township Committee wishing to discuss NJ State Best Practices Survey? Just for the public's sake, we prove this every year. Right, Heidi?
Sounds great.
All right, okay, let's roll.
Okay. For our consent agenda, we're going to have items 23-269 through 23-285, including firefighter applications, removing 23-283 for a separate vote.
Heidi, that, you said 285?
283 for a vote.
No, no, it was 269 through 285, correct?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. Now we have Resolution 23-283, a resolution authorizing Ward of Contract to vendor with state contract for health and wellness app.
Okay, I'd like to move forward. Go ahead, Rick.
Okay.
Like to move on?
Second, please.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Kratz.
Yes.
Minuteman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Refuse.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 23-283 with refusal noted. At this time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right. Minuteman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make them as quick as I can. First, congratulations to the Middletown South cross-country team. As the mayor said, it seems like we, every month we have a new state champion coming up from both of our high schools, and it's pretty awesome. It just goes to show what an outstanding sports program Middletown is offering in our school district. I'd like to thank the public and my colleagues up here for the opportunity to serve again. Last week was, or last week, it was two weeks ago. Time flies when you're having fun. Two weeks ago was Election Day, and myself and my running mate were fortunate enough to win, and just want to say thank you to everybody for the support, and I look forward to another three years of trying to do all the stuff that Mayor Perry and our lawyer spoke about at length. You know, we do get, and I said this last month, we sit up here and there's a lot more than just sitting up here and talking to the public that happens. The interface behind the scenes and the planning and the thought process is in-depth, and it was a lot more than I expected when I got up here. I've sat, I've served in other capacities within the town and have had the opportunity to be involved in some pretty heavy conversations, and I gotta say, some of the stuff we get involved with here affects generations, right? It's not, doesn't affect next week. And I've got two young children in town, and I want them to grow up here the same way that I did, so I really, really appreciate the opportunity to do this again, and I'm looking forward to helping make some great decisions to further us. to further us. Um, and I want to reiterate what I said last, last month as well. We're going to fight our butts off up here, all, all five of us, uh, with the support of our, of the entire team that's sitting around us as well, and everybody within this municipality that has a position to do the smart things, right? Not just with land development, with every single thing that we do, um, whether it's supporting our emergency services or our, our school district, um, whatever it is, we're going to, we're going to be smart, and we're going to work our butts off for everybody. So, thank you again. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate, um, Committeeman Clark and Committeewoman Kratz on a great election, and, uh, they've always put the town first, and, uh, I look forward to working with them for the next, uh, three years. Congratulations again. Uh, makes, uh, makes life easier up here to have continuity for the Township Committee and for the town as well. And, uh, just, uh, wish everyone a, a great, healthy, and happy Thanksgiving. Well, I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Committeewoman Kratz. Thank you, Mayor. Um, also, just wanted to congratulate our girls cross-country team, too. Just an amazing accomplishment for them. Um, also, wanted to thank Middletown for having their faith in me again for the next three years. Um, it's a pleasure to serve this community, and it's an honor, truly. Um, it also is not a, a bad thing to serve with the four of these guys. So, it really, uh, we're a wonderful team that really works well together, and it's, it's really an honor to serve with all of you. So, I thank you for your support always. Um, also, just a, a real big shout to Middletown helps its own. I was able to, again, volunteer with my family, along with many families and many of our first responders, to put baskets and, and boxes together for our Middletown residents, 350 of them this year. So, really, just what an accomplishment and a testament to neighbors, helping neighbors, in, in really such a beautiful time of year. So, just wanted to acknowledge them and wish everyone a blessed and happy Thanksgiving.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, Committeewoman Kratz, uh, said I was her favorite, though. Congratulations, Kim.
I'm saying that that's not true.
Great job. We, I look forward to, uh, serving, uh, the rest of my term with you guys. Uh, this committee works, uh, great as a team, and we look forward to continuing that. Uh, I want to thank all the people that came out. I know most of them left tonight. It's, uh, it's good to hear what you had to say. Uh, we all, uh, we all listen, we all live here, and we, uh, we hear what you're saying. So, um, I also, uh, want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Uh, just want to, Ryan, Kim, congratulations again. Look forward to the next three years with you. Um, two other items. December 3rd, 5 to 7, is our Christmas tree lighting this year over at the Middletown Arts Center. Hope to see you. It grows every single year. It gets better every single year. Um, and I know that the No Limits Food Truck is going to be there this year, um, which, which is great. So, hope to see everybody over there. Um, and, and again, wishing you all, uh, a very joyous Thanksgiving. I hope you all, um, get to spend time with family and friends and, and those important to you. With that, I'll open it up for public comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? May do so. S C, you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Um, and if you can begin to wrap up your comments, uh, also, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Susan Penrose, 12 Clavett and Co.
I love that. Look how fast that was.
And I'll be really quick. I, I just saw an article on Tap into Middletown where you're talking about, uh, road preservation and micro resurfacing on King's Landing Road, and I was wondering what that is going to entail. Is that a complete repaving, or is that repair, or what is it?
So, it's, it's a pilot program that we are trying.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's a very exciting way to be able to, uh, enhance the, um, the, not only the consistency, but the safety and the, um, the life of a roadway. So, basically, what this does is our team will be able to go in and seal cracks, and Ted can talk to this more. Um, but, uh, in fact, just so you know, Somerset County started off, I think they started at half a million dollars a year, they did. They are now up to $5 million a year that they dedicate just to this practice. Um, but several years back, we, um, we were discussing this very topic. So, what happens is that, uh, rather than milling a, a road down and, and completely putting new asphalt, roads that are in a fairly good condition that can be, um, repaired, patched in certain areas, cracks sealed in certain areas, then they come over with, um, asphalt and, um, I don't want to call them pebbles, but what was it? What's the right? Gravel, gravel. Um, they come over and put a, a brand-new seal down on that road, extending the life of the roadway, um, beyond what, what it can currently serve as. So, we have, the team is right now evaluating the roads that would be, uh, viable for this, but it's a way that we can now extend not only the life of the road, but also provide, um, extra time in between milling down and repaving a roadway. Uh, you, you know, it's so expensive and so timely, but the amount of time it takes to pave a road, in my opinion, is ridiculous. Um, and there are certain roads, especially those high-volume traffic area roadways, that rather than milling down and repaving, if we're able to extend the life of that road to get an additional five years out of it, 10 years out of it, by doing this process, which costs a fraction of what it does to mill and, and repave, let's try it at least. You know, let's give it a play.
So, just to be clear, just to be clear, this is a pilot that you're trying, and we, we part of it in King's Landing? Is that what you said? This is a pilot program for Middletown?
It's, it's a pilot to see, how does it work?
How does it work?
You know, is it, is it, is it cost-effective? Is, does the ti- is it easier on the timing? All these different aspects of, you know, we, we think it works because Somerset County, you know, you know, has done such a, such a large amount of capital into it for several years now. Um, but, you know, then again, what works in Somerset County, Ted might tell me, and, and our engineers might tell me, this really isn't, isn't the right time to embark on this.
And so, will we be given notice that you'll be coming into the community? Because that's our main road into King's Landing. So, do you...
We'll notify, we'll notify your, your association, your, your property manager, and, and make sure that everybody has access to vehicles and the ability to do this. But it, it, what, from what they have explained, um, this is a very quick process. So, the disruption for your neighborhood will be minimal compared to what it would be if we milled and repaved it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Jerry.
You, too. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, sir. You've been waiting a long time. I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Will Mumford, and I live on Crest Street Drive, right off Route 35, next to Whole Foods. Um, so, I am a nurse up at Robert Wood Johnson, and I'm here to request that you, as municipal leaders, please pass a resolution in support of bill A4536, which establishes minimum registered professional nurse staffing standards for hospitals and ambulatory surgery facilities, as well as certain DHS facilities. As you may know, 1,700 nurses have been on strike at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for over 100 days, and hospital management has spent over $150 million on replacement nurses rather than meet our key demands for safe staffing, appropriate and enforceable nurse-to-patient ratios that are evidence-based and keep nurses and patients safe. Um, so just to kind of illustrate why these enforceable ratios are important, so I work on a neuro-step-down unit. We have a lot of stroke patients, and it requires a lot of, um, frequent and very precise neuroassessments. So, I had a patient one day, he had a massive stroke, was in our neuro ICU for several days, was downgraded, which means he was deemed stable enough to come to our floor. Um, I came in one morning, had four other patients, we did, I did his neuroassessment, and he had a very slight defect in his left field division. So, I alerted, uh, the resident who alerted the attending. It turns out that a vessel had re-occluded. If we had not caught it, he would have been at least severely disabled or died. Um, so, if you, I had four relatively stable patients that day. If you had a sixth or a seventh, as sometimes happen, the chances that something like that would be missed increase. Um, and there is a large base of scientific evidence showing, um, decreases in patient outcomes, uh, increases in patient mortality, um, and nursing burnout with that. Um, so, studies show repeatedly that understaffing compromises patient care and safety. Understaffing in hospitals is an urgent public health concern that impacts any resident who may spend time in a hospital, which I believe is all of us. Um, I'm here today to ask you to put a resolution on the agenda and to vote on it at the next council meeting in support of legislation that needs to move forward in our state legislature. This resolution would demonstrate your commitment to our community's public health and advocate for legislation that would address the serious concern that impacts all of us. Um, this is a bipartisan issue. Whether or not you get sick and will spend time in a hospital is not determined to play a political affiliation. We need our legislatures to co-sponsor this bill, and this resolution will demonstrate your support and also encourage any of our legislators in our district who are not yet co-sponsors to take a closer look. Um, safe staffing results in safer patient care and decreased mortality rates, readmissions, and length of stay. Uh, safe staffing isn't just for nurses, it's for you and everyone else in our community who may one day find themselves in a hospital. Um, we look forward to working with you, my colleagues and I, to answer any questions you may have about the bill or resolution and provide any additional information that you may need. Thank you for your time.
First of all, thank you for everything that all of you do. Um, I work in a hospital, not Robert Wood, but your main competitor. But, but thank you for everything that you do. Um, I, I, I have to say, I, like most people, you don't really realize everything that goes into, to being a nurse. They, they are truly the backbone of a hospital, uh, hands down. There's no question about it. Um, and I, I'm fortunate to work, uh, with a lot of them. While I'm not on the clinical side, I get to work with a lot of them and understand the stories of things that you just, you just told. Um, and, and understand the importance of ensuring that when, when you're checking a family member into the hospital, into the ED or whatever the case may be, you're, you're going to have those staffing quotas that are needed to ensure that your loved ones are getting the proper care that they need. Um, so, I, I'll take a look at the bill. Brian just brought it up for me. Who's your, who's the Senate sponsor?
Vitali.
Oh, Vitali. Yeah, Vitali and Greenstein. Has, has it gotten a, um, a Senate Health Committee vote?
I don't believe so. No, it's sort of, I think, been languishing for one year.
All right. Vit- Vitali is the chairman of the Senate Health Committee. Okay, that's weird. Um, I'll take a look at the bill and, and just get my card, get Laura's card here, and, and, uh, I'll, I'll give you a buzz on, um, work, working towards something if we can, all right?
Thank you for your...
All right. Thank you again for all that you do. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? How are you?
Hi, I'm Leanne Capola. I live on L E R Terrace in Middletown. Um, I'm just following up on this to provide some further insight on what we experience. I'm speaking today as one of the 1,700 nurses that's been on strike since August 4th for state staffing. We're not on strike for money. We want more nurses. I work with some of the most vulnerable people who come into our hospital. I'm a pediatric emergency room nurse, and I have been for six years. I personally have been with Robert Wood for two years, and within those two years, most of my shifts are short-staffed. I'm stretched thin every shift, trying to ensure the safety of my patients, as well as the safety of my own license. I work repeatedly understaffed because New Jersey does not have standardized nurse-to-patient ratios. Just because this is how it's been done for years, it does not mean that's how it has to be, because it's not morally correct. We can improve, and we can change. I have witnessed terrible things from car accidents to strokes to sepsis in children, infants, and teens. This is a burden that I live with, as this is my profession. But what I cannot live with is the inability to, every time I arrive to my shift, to be unable to care with the highest quality due to the number of patients I see and due to the number of patients I'm assigned to. Will was saying he might have one to four, one to five, one to six. In the emergency room, I have had one to 12, one to 10. Most days are one to eight. What I would love is one to four, because we are the Level One Pediatric Trauma Center for the state, for Monmouth County. Everything gets shipped to us. I'm asking for your help in supporting bill A43, sorry, I'm really bad at public speaking, A4536S304, as working short staff is not an isolated problem within New Brunswick. I ask you to take a moment and recognize that this affects us all. Everyone who's receiving care within the state is most likely receiving care at a facility without appropriate nurse-to-patient ratios. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any of the fellow nurses can feel free to come up.
My name is Renee Basani. I am a resident of Middletown going on 30 years this coming January. I, um, live at, uh, Six Decker Drive in Leonardo. I've been a nurse at Robert Wood for 17 years. I started my career there, and I hope to end my career there. I have, um, since I'm there for 17 years, I have seen a lot, and the staffing has definitely gotten worse since I started my career. I want to improve the conditions so that these young nurses can come and stay, and they stay at the bedside, and unfortunately, this affects all of us. We come into the world most likely with a nurse at the bedside, and many times, we go out with a nurse at the bedside. I want to make sure that when I'm on my way out, that I have a competent nurse at my side that has the time to hold my hand. So, I hope that you will consider sponsoring and helping us in signing this resolution so that we can get what we need in the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And happy Thanksgiving.
You, too. Any other of our nurses? Okay. I thought, you know, Rick would have liked, you know, thank, thank God you were here, because if he had to race one of those cross-country outside, he would have needed it. All right, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Melanie? You say that every time you come to the microphone.
This time, I really mean it. Uh, Melanie Elmaguer, Green Tree Terrace, Lynn Croft, Code Enforcement in Lynn Croft. Uh, we had the opportunity, the Lynn Croft Village Green Board, we were invited to go to Lufman Towers and the pavilion with the residents there, just to meet them and just get a pulse on, you know, what's affecting their lives and, you know, how they feel about, you know, Lynn Croft. Are they able to get around? And the one thing they, they complained about a lot is the garbage on the Acme Road. It's always been a problem. I've called Code Enforcement so many times. It's partly the, um, property owners', uh, issue. They have dumpsters back there. They let them overflow. They're not careful when they dump. People leave things there and dump things. I know there's a lot of illegal dumping. They're not enclosed, but it streams all the way down towards their walkway to get to the Acme, to get to that, the stores in that area, the bagel shop and things like that. So, they, they said that they don't feel safe there. They can't, even on the sidewalk, it overflows. There's, you know, vaping equipment, liquor bottles, uh, but just generally, just garbage, just garbage. And any given day, you drive down the Acme Road, it's a mess. So, I've called many times, and I just don't get really any resolution. So, I'm hoping, because the seniors are so affected, that, you know, maybe you'll hear their pleas and, and possibly have someone, uh, take a look at it and talk to, um, Ms. Falcone, who's the owner of that property back there, and, um, and maybe the Acme can help as well. I don't know where the boundaries lie. A lot of times, that's the issue. But I am a firm believer that the more you see that, the more you see our other problem, which is graffiti. It's getting very bad. The, um, village park that, uh, the LVGA are stewards of has been tagged. Our Little Free Library was completely covered in graffiti, like the nice kind of graffiti, not like kids just scratching their name, but like the real tags. And we're seeing that more and more throughout town. The stop sign and the, the left turn at the Acme, tagged all over. We called, uh, Albertans to get that replaced, but it's just kind of creeping, you know? And I think the, the more you can keep the town clean and set the expectation, I don't think you see that as much. And, um, and so I'm just hoping that they can just do more on the Code Enforcement and to try to get the areas cleaned up and make the property owners more responsible, the business owners.
You know, uh, here, here's my thing, is the people that are doing that, the mom and dad have to be involved.
Of course, of course. And they're doing that in other towns. They're making the...
There's nothing, there's nothing Code Enforcement can do about, about graffiti.
No, I know. I'm just relating it to, the, the more you see the conditions lowering, the more opportunity it is for that to... the more opportunity it is for that to be, to blend in. You know, that it's, it's, they think it's not noticed, they think it fits. You know, it's like the broken window.
The amount of time the public works, scrapes graffiti off of playgrounds is outrageous.
I know, I know.
And if anyone wants to know why we can't get to X, oh, you know, by this date, is because they're scraping, they're, they're sanding graffiti off of, off of this or off of that, you know? I, I think that there has to be some type of level of personal responsibility when it comes to parents that are figuring out what it is that their kids are doing at night. Um, I've had a couple of things spray painted about me on a road a couple of years back, and very flattering stuff. Um, but, but the, the, eventually I got you, you know? Um, but, uh, again, for every time that that happens, there is something else that has to get pushed down to the bottom of the list, because people don't want to see the graffiti.
I'm not, I'm not asking for that, I'm just asking for just a general, um, care to be taken by the property owners to clean up and perhaps keeping that standard higher, that you're not gonna allow garbage everywhere, um, will help in other areas. That's it. Okay.
Yeah, 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 that guy. All right, thanks, Melanie. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Minewoman Clark.
Yes.
Minewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Uh, Minewoman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.